Welcome, everybody, to the, excuse me, May 24th meeting of the Franklin Municipal Planning Commission. Appreciate everybody being here. We will start our meeting with the minutes from our April meeting. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. All right, ladies and gentlemen, the audience, this is a time where if you are speaking about items that are not on tonight's agenda, you can come forward and talk to the commission about any concerns you've got to express, but only for items that are not on tonight's agenda. All right, I see none, then we'll move on to announcements. Kathryn?
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to remind everybody of our goal-setting session that will be at West Haven on May 31st between 11:00 and 1:00, and we hope to send out invitations, let everybody give, get everybody directions and all of that in the next day or so. We'll also be sending an agenda.
Okay, great.
Additionally, Mr. Chairman, just a reminder, and we'll probably be reminding you again as time goes by, that disclosure forms will be required of plant commission members starting January 2013.
Okay, thank you. All right, staff or anyone in the audience, is there items that are not on tonight's agenda that you'd like for the commission to consider? All right, I see none, then we'll move on to our consent agenda. Before we get started with that, we have our vice chair who is not with us tonight, so we need to elect a vice chair for the evening.
Oh, no.
So I'll take a motion.
Lady Ann Peterson for vice chair for this afternoon's meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. All right, we have the consent agenda tonight. These are items that are deemed non-controversial that we will address as one vote. We actually have two consent agendas. One is for the majority of the items, one is for those that us on the commission need to recuse ourselves from. Our consent agenda tonight, item number 33, there were some revised conditions that are included in your, at your station that would be considered as part of that consent approval. Also, item 38, instead of being on secondary consent, we're going to move that to deferral. The applicant's requested deferral for 30 days, so we'll move that to consent, to the consent agenda. Yes, ma'am?
What about 39, that your staff recommended deferral on that one?
I'm not aware of that.
Item 39, I believe, is the wild duck. The applicant has asked for that to be deferred.
Okay, so item 39 will be deferred.
And is item...
Mr. Chairman, item 38, it will remain on secondary consent, though.
Oh, because it's still something I'm in, okay. I understand. I'm sorry.
Even though it's a deferral.
We'll leave that on secondary consent.
Thank you, that's the reason I had the mixed up.
Okay, so are there any items on consent agenda that staff or commission or anyone in the audience that want to pull off the consent agenda?
Number 37.
37? Okay.
Just to look at it.
Any others? All right, then I'm going to kind of re-go through this. Item 7 through 20 will be on consent. Item 23 and 24 will be on consent. 32, 34 through 36, I'm sorry, 30, let's go back, 32 through 36, and then 39 will be deferred as part of that consent agenda.
Move for approval as amended.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. All right, Ann, I'm going to turn the meeting over to you to address the secondary consent items.
The secondary consent items are 21, 22, and 38, and the 38 would be deferral.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. That passes.
Thank you, Ann. All right, then, if I have my numbers right, we'll move to item 25, which is ordinance 2012-25 to be entitled ordinance to rezone 72.91 acres from agricultural AG to medium residential district R2, I'm sorry, and medium residential R2 to residential variety RX for the properties located south of Clovercroft and southeast of Market Street.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This rezoning, as you mentioned, involves two tracks. One is currently zoned ag, the other is on R2. The request is to rezone the property to RX. The request is consistent with the land use plan recommendation, therefore, staff gives this request a favorable recommendation.
All right. Now, I will say, if you're here to speak for or against this project, there are two items that are being considered. There's a rezoning, and then there's a development plan. We'll consider those separately, so the first discussion will be about rezoning, which in effect will allow certain uses on the property, not specific to the layout, so please don't come forward on the first discussion and talk about, we would prefer not to have a specific kind of, a specific, well, something specific to the land plan or layout of the plan. Just speak generalized relative to the first rezoning request. So we'll start now with any one in the audience that wants to speak to this first item. If you'll come forward, tell us your name, where you live, and keep your comments to two minutes or less, please. Anybody want to speak to the rezoning? Go ahead and come forward over here if you would.
My family and I reside on the Wilson Pike end of Clovercroft Road. We have lived undriven on this road for more than 30 years. I would like to bring to you tonight my concerns. Many in the Clovercroft community have wells, and when McCase Mills was constructed, the blasting moved the earth, some wells went dry, and some of the water coming out of the faucets smelled like diesel water. What if, what if any plans do the reunion have to do if this occurs again? The reunion plans to build 153 homes and 73 acres next to her family. Please take into consideration, each house is going to have two or more cars. That means that there's going to be an extra 306 cars already traveling on a congested road. I know this has been analyzed, and the person that did this does not live, has not lived there and don't know what we know. It has been suggested to lower the speed limit. With all due respect, we have cars traveling from Bedford, Marshall, Rutherford, Murray, parts of Davison, and as well as Williamson County, cutting through Wilson Pike to get to Cool Springs, Brentwood, and Nashville quicker. In 1997, a family member of ours was hit exiting our driveway, and that was before McCase Mill came in. And a driver from another county was cutting through the road and speeding when they hit her. Our driveway is blind on the left and right side. Please, people that drive Clovercroft Road do not always drive the split, speed limit. The speed limit has already been reduced to 30 miles an hour on the null and full end, and we don't even know if that's even helped. To get our mail, it's necessary for us to stand inches from the white line and traffic. Our mailboxes are on a double blindsided hill approximately 200 feet from the proposed entrance of Amelia Park. My concern are people on cellphones texting or just looking away for a second. When we are getting our mail, I feel like that's life-threatening. Wilson Pike and Clovercroft Road has no shoulders on either side of the road. If you meet an emergency vehicle, there's nowhere to go. Anyone traveling Clovercroft Road and has not had to stop or dodge, a bicycle rider just does not know how dangerous it is for the bicycle rider and the driver and the oncoming traffic. In 1980, when it was less populated, a bike rider was killed at the end of Clovercroft and Wilson Pike. Ladies and gentlemen, I ask you to please take this into consideration, our worries about the proposed additional traffic to an already dangerous road. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
My name is Pat Moran, and I live at 4088 Clovercroft Road, have been there 28 years, and think it's probably one of the most beautiful places that you'll ever see. So I'm requesting something of each one of you. I would like for you to make a little trip out there and observe and see what you all are considering now. Now, I have no objection to the subdivision. My big objection is to the traffic problem that we have now. I have lost almost more mailboxes than I can count, and the last one, the gentleman was very lucky. He turned upside down, went through my fence, took mailboxes, everything else with him, and he wasn't hurt badly. They took him to the hospital, but this concerns me. I know that I understood that developer had done a traffic study before we met with them three weeks ago, or I didn't happen to meet, I was not well then. I sit on my front porch, and I'm retired, and I look, and I see what goes up and down: bicycles, motorcycles, pick-em-ups, tractor trailers, you name it, we have it. Now, a lot of them don't live near us. They come from Arrington, Triune, they're everywhere. In fact, just the other day, very close to what, where they're proposing the subdivision now, I came up the hill, I go to church on Wilson Pike, I came up the hill under the speed limit and hit the crest of the hill, and there were five bicycles out in front of me. And it's beyond me to see how in the world Clovercroft can carry the amount of traffic that will be there if they get max density in that subdivision. And, well, you hate to see things happen, and there's no reason for somebody to have to be hurt on that area because it's curvy. It's beautiful, there's no, there's no reason to think it's not beautiful, but it, if the density is max, I'm afraid that there, there're going to be a lot of, I may come out of the driveway, I'm 81, sometimes I wait seven and eight cars in a row to come past me, and then I look the other way, and here comes four or five. You know, maybe one day I might be the one to pull out, and the girl spilling coffee on her and runs down in the ditch and takes me and her, too. So please, give lots of consideration to the amount of traffic. My next-door neighbor lost three mailboxes in four weeks, and it's, oh, we'll change the speed limit. I don't care if you put it 10 miles an hour. You and I drive on the same roads around here, and you see that they don't always do what the speed limit tries. I would, I would just hope that you would consider this. I'm not against the subdivision, I'm against the density of it. And I know there's a rock quarry through there, I know there's bogland in that, and I don't know whether the max density they're asking for was done with the idea that maybe 25 percent of that land is bog. And if you think you can build it up, I wouldn't buy a house that sat on that part. Now, the developer, I understand, said, oh, we're going to leave lots of green space. Well, the green space is, would have to be the bogland, and I just, I just, I hope that you all will consider this as though it's where you live and you know the traffic. But I think if you would go out, I would ask, if, if you all would ask the developer for another traffic study, only do it from 4:00 to 7:00 in the afternoon and 6:00 to 9:00 in the morning, because I sit on my porch. I could keep, in fact, it would be wonderful. If they would make me a deputy sheriff, I could sit in my driveway and I could stop the fast driving. But it, I just, I hope you will do lots of considering, and I see several of you that I recognize, and I know you have good heads, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Wilson Herbert Jr., and this is Susan Ingramham, and our property is a joint development, and she'll speak for us.
I'm going to read something to you. Is this even on?
It is on.
Okay. I'm going to read something to you that was prepared, so that you'll have this information, and then I will speak specifically relative to our farm as it is adjacent to the property that will be developed. The first thing I want to say is, I have met personally on several occasions with the developers, the people that are putting this project together, they come across to me as people of integrity, they come across to me as people that will and want to and will do the right things, and that is a pleasure because we're going to be working with them. We know the subdivision's going to happen, we can't fight that, we don't own the land, we can fight it on our own land, and we know it's not going to happen on our side of the fence, and I think Shaq's the same way, it's not going to happen on his side of the fence. So as we work with people through the process, we appreciate being able to work with people of integrity that I think in a lot of ways have good business sense toward what they're, they're working toward and what they're trying to do. Let me read this to you, and then I will express the concerns relative to my personal land also. Dear members of the City Planning Commission, I address you today to appeal to your sense of responsibility and respect. The tract of property has been zoned by Franklin City as R2 medium residential. To rezone the same piece of property to RX for residential variety, allowing a higher density of more varied homes when no changes have occurred in the community since the original zoning, benefits only the development team and those associated with it, not the community. The community will be left to live with the tools used by others to make a profit while the others are long gone making a profit in someone else's community. The first question here is, is there a real reason from the Franklin City Planning Commission's perspective to even consider this rezoning? This person goes on to say, the community will endure higher traffic that already calculated may drop the road at least one grade. Clovercroft Road is a county road, therefore, the burden of maintenance and improvements falls upon Williamson County government, not Franklin City government. The parcel of property is also lying among homes on county parcels that still enjoy and maintain an agricultural environment that is already in place. A higher-density development will add an elevated burden of upgrades to security, safety, and maintenance issues, such as, such burdens diminish the quality of life of individuals who have worked hard to build their agricultural businesses. The beauty and benefit of agriculture is part of the appeal of Williamson County. To continue pushing higher density is also pushing out agriculture. What else do we need to change about our community, our homes, to provide a profit to others? The big picture for this city to cookie-cut a higher-density development in the midst of an agricultural environment is not a responsible nor is it a respectable decision for the community. It simply does not fit. The reunion development proposed for this site was not zoned RX. Why should the zoning change from R2 to RX now? They continue to write, this Franklin City Planning Commission is looked to for decisions to maintain historic Franklin, not make Franklin history. I appeal to you to adhere to a decision which has already been made by you, the city. The parcel is zoned and should remain zoned as R2 medium residential. Please deny the request for rezoning this proposal development to RX residential variety. Thank you for your time and for your wise and conscientious action during the voting There are several concerns that we have, and I guess I would like a definition, and I don't know if you can answer me at this point in time or not, but I personally am unclear as to the details of the zoning that is requested. I have been told that the zoning that is requested will allow them to put pretty much as many houses or whatever type of homes in that area that they want to put in there. I don't know if that is correct or not. The number of houses that they have on a plan that I have seen is somewhere around, I'm going to remember it, as 150 or so. I have a concern about that amount of hard surface on the land that they are putting it on. I own the land next to that, and we have a high percentage of what we call bog, and the, the blasting will not only affect the wells, but it will affect our springs, and we do not have wells on our farm, we have springs. Springs are much more, they're much easier to disturb than wells are. I know that from the conversations that I've had with this team, that they will comply 100 percent with everything that the engineering requires them to do, and I still am not sure that that will be enough to keep from protecting, to protect our springs and to protect our land as they cover with hard surface areas that are bog areas right now. The existing plan that I have seen is very similar to what I know to be the villages of Clovercroft, and I have visited the villages of Clovercroft quite often, and with the way the parking is there for all the, the people that live there that park on the streets, if there was an emergency vehicle that needed to get in there, good luck. It won't be happening unless they're going to plow over the cars that are already parked in the streets. So the density that comes with that type of a plan concerns me because if, if the fire ends up close to my fence line and ends up coming over and affecting my woods and my grasslands, and then that, that's a crash and burn on my business, which is agriculture.
Ma'am, could you please get close to wrapping up?
I'd be glad to.
Thank you.
I would like, I would question the limits that you put on the numbers of residents that should live in this property, and I would ask you to consider the buildable land versus the total amount of land. There are two completely different numbers. There are quite a few things in this area that keep you from being able to build. There's a Blue Lime Creek, there's a gas pipeline, and there's elevations and grades that completely keep you from being able to build in certain areas. And those, all of that was visible and available to these folks when they bought the property, so I would like you to look at the number of residents that they are asking for based on the buildable property as opposed to being based on what is being labeled as green space. We're glad to have them in the community, we're glad to have residents that will appreciate us. I think you've heard all the information about our concern about the roads. No shoulder on Clovercroft Road is a huge, huge concern, and I think that some planning is being done to help with those things, but until we see that actually happen, we are all concerned.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else?
My name is Norris Alderson. I live in McCase Mill. I also happen to be president of the Master Homeowners Association in McCase Mill. We have met with the developer of this neighborhood on three occasions, and in all those occasions, the developer has been very forthcoming relative to what they plan to do, and assured us that they're going to do whatever this city wants in terms of development. You've heard things tonight which are concerns, and I share those concerns. What I think that the issue you've got to think about is whether you want to proceed with this type of development in the, in the city, and that's a major decision you have to make, and I respect that and understand it. But I also understand that the concerns that I have, and also the concerns of people in McCase Mill that have met with the developer, is again this traffic issue. And it's not the issue that we're talking about specifically tonight, it's more about the decisions you've made previously. And that relates to the traffic that's going to come in on McCase, come in on Oxford Glen and Market Street. It's all going to converge on a very small roundabout that doesn't meet the needs today, much less the additional traffic you're going to put to it. So, if all of this traffic is trying to get over to McEwing and Cool Springs Boulevard, they all have to go through that very small roundabout. So I think you've got to consider the decisions you've made previously as well as this decision. They can't be separated, they're all one and the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, is there someone representing the applicant?
Yes, that is me, Marshall Schumate. I'm employed full-time by the property owner to manage certain real estate assets, among other matters, and I'm joined tonight by my consulting development team. I have Gillian Fishbach, president of traffic engineering firm Fishbach Transportation Group, and Sean DeCoster of Little John Engineering, who's provided related civil engineering work. I want to thank you first for your consideration of our application. It is our intention to consolidate the zoning of the two tracks into one class. This RX zoning request is consistent and compatible with that of the surrounding development and the Franklin Land Use Plan. We've met with neighbors, as you've heard, we've addressed their concerns both individually and collectively. We've worked closely with staff, we've complied with their comments, and we have followed their recommendations. We are pleased to answer questions or otherwise participate in your discussion. We ask for your consideration and approval of this rezoning request.
Okay, thank you. All right, just a reminder to the commission, this is a recommendation to BOMA, and we're not voting for approval, it's purely a recommendation to that, the next board, so do I have a motion relative to this application?
Move for approval.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Ms. Peterson?
This, this, the rezoning itself kind of exemplifies something that has been troubling me for a while, and that is the fact that the zoning that they're requesting, it has not so much to do with their particular... to do with their particular development, is that RX has no density associated with it. Every other residential zone has a density associated with it. And I think that that is something that needs to be looked at. Here, there is a change from the two units per acre, basically, that is there right now. It's not, in fact, I guess to ask, what is the density? I've looked it up, I think, but...
Well, it's currently approved for what, 150 units?
It's currently, well, those are an expired concept.
That's right.
And that was for 92 lots under R2. One tract is R2, the other tract, smaller tract, is AG. So the density of the project as now or as formally approved, really nothing in place now. It was 1.4, or if you look at it as R2, I guess there's a, you could answer that question differently.
Of course, Ms. Peterson, the vote, this vote is just about rezoning versus...
Absolutely.
That specific site plan.
Well, another problem that I have is that we also, whenever we rezoned before, that wasn't just a regular residential zone, it was rezoned to a particular density. And I hope that we will consider going back to that at some other time. Generally, there's not a problem with that, and there's not necessarily a problem here.
Right.
But that brings to mind what I originally said, that now the RX zone basically has no density associated with it at all, no limitation on the density.
Right, okay. You have any discussion?
And I will actually just, did what Ann just said, that bothers me, not so much this developer, I couldn't care less who the developer is, but I don't particularly want to open it up in the clove. With this area being just like every resident, just to strive, I don't feel like we should just give carte blanche to whatever you decide as far as density is concerned, and I won't be able to support that.
Okay, all right. Any other comments?
Chairman, I'd like to just say, he's specific on his, on his RX zoning in the form of 172 units, is that correct?
153. Oh, I'm sorry. Am I supposed to answer?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So the reunion then was 172 units, is what's in our package?
It was 92.
That's the previous...
That was revised. That was what they were proposing at initial submittal, I believe, but the current plan shows 153 units.
So we know at some point it'll be a subdivision. What's the consensus of the, of the number of units there?
Well, the number of units have to be voted on with the development plan. So just because a subdivision has an RX zoning, it doesn't, it's not entitled to any units until BOMA action to give it an entitlement.
So will BOMA set the specific numbers then?
With the development plan approval.
So we have no control over that.
Yeah, that's no problem.
All right, any other comments?
I guess I could refer the thing, it looked as if it was 2.1 on the...
That's correct.
On this, which is not a lot different from the two.
Right.
I will say, I'll just go ahead and comment on that. As part of the development plan, they are actually adding the 11-acre parcel. So even though the previous approval was for 92 units, it was only on the 62-acre parcel, whereas now they're adding in another 11 acres in addition to adding the units.
Okay. Any other comments?
Does that include the part that's unbuildable? I mean, when we're doing this, we include everything?
Okay, anything else? All right, so we're voting just on the rezoning request to RX. Everybody understands that motion? So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Two no's. Ms. Peterson?
Ms. Allen.
I'm sorry, yes. All right, so the motion passes. We move now to resolution, Resolution 2012-24, Resolution approving a development plan for Amelia Park PUD subdivision located south of Clovercroft Road and southeast of Market Street by the City of Franklin, Tennessee.
Mr. Chairman, this development plan, as we've just discussed, proposes 153 single-family lots on a property where PUD is currently approved for 92 dwelling units. The existing PUD is only on the 62-acre parcel, and this revision includes the additional 11-acre parcel. This development plan also includes the extension of Market Street, which was not fully designed with the last concept plan due to some alignment issues and not having that additional parcel. This is an extension of the street network as identified in the major thoroughfare plan, and it is one of the benefits of this PUD. Staff recommends a favorable recommendation to BOMA. And I'll just add that based on previous discussion, this is more, the applicant has tried to cluster around some of the areas that are not as conducive to development. So the applicant has tried to stay away from the stream buffers as identified in our stormwater ordinance, and also taking into consideration the areas of slopes. There are some critical lots identified that would require additional review due to the slopes. And then there's also the Columbia Gassement that runs through the center of the property. Again, staff recommends a favorable recommendation.
Okay, thank you. All right, ladies and gentlemen in the audience, if you want to speak to this item, this is the development plan that we just talked about. If your comments earlier would be similar to the same comments on this one, you don't need to reiterate that with us. But if you have new comments relative to the development plan that we haven't heard, please feel free to come forward, and we'll give you a couple of minutes each to give us your thoughts. If not, we, I think we all remember the previous comments, since we just heard those, we don't need to hear those again. But if you want to give us something new, that'd be great. Otherwise, we'll move on to hearing from the applicant again. All right. Anyone representing the applicant come forward, and we'll discuss the development side of this.
All right, thank you very much. Same guy, Marshall Schumate. Just as a brief introduction of the development plan, I think staff has done a pretty good job. The site consists of 72.9 acres. The plan accommodates the presence of two jurisdictional streams. It provides for the extension to Market Street to our southern boundary. Our current plan consists of 153 lots of various sizes, a density proposed of 2.1, which is less than that, less than that of most near developments, McCase Mill and Villages of Clovercroft. And it accommodates one of the neighbor concerns, which is moving houses off the eastern slope as compared to a prior plan, downslope and more distant from the homes of the existing homes of neighbors. So the team and myself remain available for questions.
All right, is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
It moved a second in discussion.
I have a question if I could for, I guess, staff or the applicant. Mention was made of the changes and the effects of blasting, that blasting had on wells and possibly on streams. Has that, has anybody taken that into consideration, considered that? And if, I guess my question is, if that does occur, is there no consequence? What happens? You just have to live with it? My concern is always to take care of folks who live there too, as well as welcoming in new people. That is a concern, and I'm pretty sensitive to it because my grandparents had a well in the country. And if your well went dry or something went wrong with your well, you're in trouble. So that's just a question I have about this.
Should I comment?
If you would like to, if you can give us some good insight, please do.
Sure, we'll do our best. I've got another consultant here that has not yet been introduced, Mr. Evan Roggerio. Evan, could you come in and give us a little insight? Evan is president of Land Solutions and has actually done some prior research for us for that, for this very question.
Again, my name is Evan Roggero. We are a project management company. I heard a couple of comments earlier, and first want to thank the neighbors for their comments about us having the integrity to come and talk to them. So that was one of the biggest things that we wanted to put forward. The comments I have in regard to the blasting, I would say, first off, we hire reputable contractors. We're going to have somebody out there that not only knows about the wells in the area or the springs that were mentioned earlier, but someone that can understand how to do drilling patterns, what kind of powder to use, all the rest of that kind of stuff. So there are ways to get around any of the concerns that happen. Now, we can't, obviously, I'm not saying I promise everything's going to happen, but knowing what we know about the site and the neighboring pieces of property, those things can definitely be addressed. So...
Thank you.
That answers the question.
Yes, it does, thanks.
Any other questions?
Yes, on the traffic study, the conclusions and recommendations that were submitted, will they be a part of things that will be incorporated into the site plan that was recommended through the traffic study?
Yes, yes, they are.
There's Ms. Peterson, please.
Well, one of my questions is kind of a follow-up to that. Who controls the street that rode out there? Because we've just, just at our last Board of Mayor and Autobrilliant Meeting, we talked about going from 40 to 35 miles per hour, back to 40 again, and on another, in another instant. And one of the recommendations with the traffic study was that there, there would, there would need to be some warning light, lights there because, and let me go, I'm going to ask that question, but let me say to you, whenever I read, you know, it says horizontal and vertical curves, to me, that means a hill and a curve too, you know? So I need to say that. And there, this is an area that does have challenges in both of those cases. And the mention of a blind driveway, there's more than one, I think, out there in that area, and I think that is a real concern. So who, I mean, the question, though, about putting in the traffic recommendations, who makes the decision on what the, the traffic, I mean, the speed limit will be out there? Because I know this is a, it's a city-county, city-county business on the road.
I think that we'll have to go back and look. I can't recall right off the top of my head exactly where the line is out there where it shifts control from the city to the county. But our intent is to move forward with its approved and implementing the recommendations of the traffic study as provided. So I can go back and take a look at that if it gets approved tonight and make sure that if we need to coordinate with the county on a section of that, that that gets happening and is done appropriately as recommended in the traffic study.
It sounds like some of the question, we've heard this on other projects, that there's some site distance issues...
Yes, I understand.
...in the vertical curve and things that I'm not, not qualified to talk about, but there are some issues.
You have referred to in here.
There are things that we can control. You know, we're obviously going to do our best to deal with the traffic issues and try to address it internally, but when it deals with a county road versus a city road, then we lose a little bit of control of how to address how development affects that road.
Yeah, the, one of the big things, if I recall correctly from the traffic study, I'm sure Gillian will correct me if I get it wrong, but there was some discussion in there about putting some advanced warning signs in, particularly, you know, when we start talking about horizontal and vertical curvature, really what we're getting at is, as you're coming down the road, do you have enough distance to see properly to be able to stop and make sure that you navigate things appropriately? And there are a couple spots in the different approaches to this project where we're looking at placing some advanced warning signage further back before you hit those curves to slow people down, put a blinking light in front of them and say, hey, there's something coming up. You know, if you see a sign like that, that generally slows people down, and I don't know if you want to elaborate on that, but that's a big part of the plan on how to address these, the site distance concerns.
Right, right.
Can I add to that, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
This roadway segment is entirely within the city of Franklin, this particular roadway segment. So you do have...
Can you speak up? We cannot hear her.
This entire roadway segment is within the city of Franklin, so you do have control over what happens along the frontage. Further east of the property line is where it becomes county again.
Okay.
So we have worked with Carl and the engineering department, traffic department, to recommend the flashers that Dan mentioned for eastbound traffic as you're approaching Market Street. We've also have recommended the reduced speed limit along the frontage of this facility, which I understand is an enforcement issue, but, but it is something that we can do to improve the conditions. Also, we are going to be widening a portion of Clovercroft to provide turn lanes, left turn lanes into the property at both accesses, which will help in that segment. And also, all of the lighting that will happen at both access points will improve traffic conditions in that area, give you a little bit of ambient light in that area to, to help through those curves.
How close is that area, that intersection, to validity for a stop line?
Uh...
And I hear comments about it takes me 10 cars before I can make a left turn and all that. So it sounds like there's some existing traffic that, are we, are we close to that point?
With this development, I do not believe that we will meet lots. As Market Street is extended farther south, I think that is a very appropriate location for a traffic signal installation in the future.
Okay.
And if I might, Mr. Chairman, along that lines, when will we, I guess it would then come back to us, when will we determine that? Because if that does, let's just say that does, that does trigger that event, is there any mechanism that we would or someone would have to come and request it before us, before we would do that? Because I'm saying, you know, we project that it won't warrant, but if it does, is there any way to revisit that? Is there any, does anybody ever look at that, or just someone has to request it?
No, yeah, the engineering department looks at that. You know, the residents out there, if it continues to be a concern, and if it looks like it's performing differently than projected, you know, I'm sure that they'll call us and let us know.
So there is request. I just want to be sure.
We'll program it in, for sure.
All right. Could I ask a question while we're talking about this? If I'm looking at this correctly up there on that map, it is true that the road through this, or that this, this development of butts is a part of the city. But if I'm not mistaken, on either side of this development, isn't it a county road?
Yes, it is.
So it really is a county road until it gets to this development. And then this is between, between, the road between this and McCase Mill is in the city. But then immediately, as soon as you pass the boundary here, it goes back to the county again.
Yes.
So the warning signal will be on a county road, actually?
That's right. It would be on the county part of the road, if I understand it right. It would have to be requested through the county.
The engineering department has reviewed these conclusions and recommendations, and you all agree that this is going to be a part of the approval process to help alleviate the traffic situation.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so this will be not a part of this approval, but part of the site plan approval? Is it?
Yeah, you know...
Does this go along with tonight, with this for tonight?
Yeah, and then what we'll do is we'll take that, and when they come in and bring in the more detailed site plan documents, that's where we'll really get into making sure the lanes are laid out properly and all the right-of-way gets dedicated, signs are placed in the right spot. And that's, that'll be the next step if it gets approved tonight.
While we're talking about the traffic study, and I certainly, you know, just read this as a layperson, but I was really surprised that there were, there was less than one car per dwelling unit that was expected to exit the development at peak hour?
That's true of every traffic impact study that's done for residential development. It's true that what we're looking at is just a 60-minute window. And not every vehicle is going to leave in that same peak hour window. Some people leave before, let's say the peak hour is seven to eight. Some people leave before seven for work, some people leave after eight for work. It doesn't mean that, that the majority are not leaving for work in the morning. It just means they're not all leaving in that same 60-minute window.
So whenever you say peak hour, you mean literally one hour?
I mean, literally, a peak hour.
I thought that it was like from seven to nine.
That's when we do the counts, but within that, within that two-hour window, we find the peak 60 minutes.
All right, any other discussion?
Oh, well, wait, you mean on the whole thing?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay. Let's see, I think we've talked about the things on the, on the traffic, although I completely understand what the people who are living out there say. completely understand what the people who are living out there say, because if you look at it, there, there are a lot of blind areas out there, and that was acknowledged, I think. Okay, on the parking, what, what have been our changes in parking requirements since those surrounding developments were, have occurred? Because we have heard that in some of the other areas, there's not enough parking, and there's concern about parking on the street, and, and what are we doing now to address that in a better?
I believe our parking requirements are still two parking spaces per unit for single-family. The applicant may be able to address how they're actually gonna provide, accommodate for that guest parking and that type of thing.
Sean DeCosta, Lil' John Engineering. All the homes that are proposed will have two-car garages, and in addition, we have pont street parking provided down at the southeast corner of the site along, excuse me, southwest corner of the site along Market Street, where the homes front, or face Market Street, though they're served off of a service alley.
But they will have the two, two parking places for every one of them, which is, and some additional parking, okay? I noticed there was something in here that showed a turning radius. I'm assuming it looked like a fire truck, I could not tell what that was. But those, those turning radii, and I don't remember what piece of that this was in, but does this accommodate a school bus, also?
We didn't look at it specifically for a school bus, but we did address the turning radii movement for a fire vehicle, which would be a similar size, at the roundabout and the, the entrance points and the cul-de-sac off Catch Court. So, yes, ma'am, it should.
Would you say that, that fire truck looked like it was kind of articulated some way?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so we're thinking that a school bus would be the same?
Yes, ma'am.
Thing, because that was a concern, whenever I, whenever I looked at that. Another thing was that on the south, and this may be addressed at a later time, although it's shown here, there's a twenty-five-foot landscape buffer, and I speak to it on the south, it looks like on the east and west sides, there's, well, first of all, there's a, there's a big change in the elevation, I think, on one side, and there appear to be, and there's also, there's also a lot of vegetation. But on the south, it looks as if this is just, you know, it'll be that twenty-five-foot landscape easement, and then it just goes right into the, the other, the other property owners. And I, I remember at the, at the meeting, the neighborhood meeting that I attended, there was a comment about, you know, it's, it's not just keeping their livestock off of this property, but perhaps keeping each entity away from the other one. I mean, and so, I don't, I don't know that there would be just a landscape buffer, you know, would be adequate on the south, at the south end. Is there a plan? I mean, there was some issue of a fence, but I don't.
This development plan stage, we haven't come up with any detailed plans for how we would, how we would address that landscape buffer.
I think that, that would be a concern there. And, well, my other thing is, Biscayne Drive, there look as, as if there are, I seen, I noticed there are several lots designated as critical lots, this is on C 2.0 on the development plan, and some, a couple of them look like they're all within the, you know, and including the, the part of the street is in the twenty percent slope.
The twenty percent slope is that darker area, yes, ma'am.
Right, gotcha. So, and, and on the fourteen, we just have to have a, some kind of, on the fourteen to nineteen percent slope, we just have to have retaining walls, is that it?
We'd have to submit a critical lot plan to engineering to show our proposed grades on those lots.
Because there's some, there's not just the ones on Biscayne, but some others are also just fully in the nineteen, fourteen to nineteen percent.
Some of that would be addressed as we grade the roads to, to address the existing grades and grade up into the lots to make them more suitable for buildings.
You know, they're, they're just some things that, that are more difficult, I think, on this. And the more I looked at it, the more I realized that. I'm concerned, there are a lot of different things that, that come into play as you, as you look there. I guess the last thing would be the Mill-Crofton water line on the south side of Clovercroft, where they're saying that it, it has a certain width and depth that can't be disturbed unless you change, unless you move the line, is that it? And I just wondered if the, having been making the changes on the, on Clovercroft Road would affect that? Because this would be on the south side of Clovercroft, as I understand it. I mean, this is on the south side, and I think the letter said that, that the water line was on the south side of Clovercroft.
Yes, ma'am, it is.
So what, what's the, does that mean that you're gonna have to move that, that line?
We don't anticipate having to move the line as part of the improvements, no, ma'am.
All right. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm gonna say no.
Ms. Peterson says no.
Too many, too many questions.
Motion passes. All right, item number twenty-seven, Resolution 2012 dash twenty-five, Resolution Improving a Development Plan for the Grove at Parish Park, PUD subdivision located east of Downs Boulevard by the city of Franklin to the state.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanna offer a little bit, in the way of background, on this project. Concept plan for the Grove at Parish Park was reviewed and approved by BOMA in 2008. That plan included fifty-two residential lots on fifteen-point-two acres and a seven-point-nine acre lot for a church. Site plans and a final plat for the property were reviewed and approved in 2009. Between that time and now, the church that had planned to relocate to that property has decided to do otherwise. Thus, the new plan that's in front of you tonight includes eighty-seven single-family units and one-point-five-three acres of formal open space. An eight-foot-wide multipurpose trail along Downs Boulevard is shown on the plan, as is a stub out to the north, which would allow for a connection to any future street extensions in that area. Staff does recommend that you send this development plan on to BOMA with a favorable recommendation that includes the conditions outlined in the staff report.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak to this particular item? If so, if you'd come up to the podium and tell us your name, where you live, and try to keep your comments to two minutes, please.
Yeah, my name is Charles Johnson, I live at four-zero-four Veranda Lane. I'm the Willow Springs HOA president. I've lived on the west side of Franklin for a little over fourteen years now. I've seen a tremendous amount of growth on the west side of Franklin, but I've also seen a lack of infrastructure growth in that same period of time. And I hate to be on the same bandwagon as everybody else, which is infrastructure, density, and all of that, but so be it, I have to be. Like he said, this development has been through several modifications, actually, prior to that. Prior to that, it was a commercial residential. We worked very closely with the developer at the time to try to come up with something that was amenable to both the residents there and the surrounding communities. The other thing that they didn't mention is it was proposed as a development that had LEED technologies, it was LEED certified. So this is the reason we needed higher density, because it's more expensive to build a LEED certified home. Right now, before you, is a non-LEED certified development at a very high density. In fact, to put it into perspective, it's twenty-three acres with three-point-seven-seven units per acre. To a lot of people, it's only a number, but what's really behind a number? If we were to take the west side of Franklin and take some of our surrounding communities and look at them, if we took Willow Springs and we said, okay, Willow Springs is now three-point-seven-seven, we'd go from three-hundred-and-forty-four units to four-hundred-and-eighty-six units. Barclay Place, eighty-six to one-thirteen. Franklin Green would go from four-ninety-seven to seven-fifty-four. And West Haven, our biggest community on that side of town, would go from twenty-six-hundred to a mind-boggling thirty-eight-hundred-and-ninety homes. With these four communities, and that's not the only communities on the west side of Franklin, we would increase our housing by seventeen-hundred units. That would definitely crush an already crippled side of Franklin from an infrastructure standpoint. Another flaw that we have in this community is that it dumps two dump points on Downs Boulevard. That's a truck route, a hazard hazmat truck route. They both dump on a curved access point. I don't know if any of you remember, but the city of Franklin had to come in and put a stop sign at Boyd Mill and Downs Boulevard because of several hazardous accidents that happened there. Well, guess what? That is a straight view of access road. Both of those dump points, you are blind access dump points. So at that point in time, with no, no streetlights or anything, the city of Franklin is gonna have to come back and do something at their own cost. And lastly, only because I have a short period of time, and I wanna respect your two minutes, I know I just briefly went over it, I was disturbed by one comment that the developer made at our neighborhood meeting, and that was, well, this is the density that we have to have in order to make this work. Is it our job as neighbors, your job as a planning commission, BOMA's job representing the city of Franklin, to make a development work for builders and development? I don't think so. Thank you for your time and concerns.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lauren Lexa, I live in the Boyd Mill Estates subdivision on the other side of this property. My lot is actually the one right there, the little triangle-shaped one. Closest point is, of my properties, about twenty feet from the property line with this subdivision. Of all the plans that we've had, yeah, where the hand is, that's me. Of all the plans we've had for this site, this is the best selfishly for me. We don't have the road that was gonna run along the tree line, the property line, that's fabulous to me. I didn't wanna watch a second Downs Boulevard twenty feet from my house. Like the previous speaker said, I am concerned that this is a truck route, and we are putting a lot of houses on a very busy street. If y'all have ever been down there on the weekend when soccer's in season, there's a minimum of four squad cars out there trying to direct traffic generated by the soccer people. When you add that many more homes, you know, I don't know how much more that would magnify the traffic. So I do have a concern about that. I am in favor of this, I think the density is a little high. Rather than looking at so many homes, I'd rather look at the deer and the fawn and the wild turkeys that I see now. I know that's not gonna happen. I wish they had more open space. We have seventeen acres of open space in our subdivision. If I were a kid and I didn't have a yard and I looked out and here is seventeen acres with a basketball court with a playground, that's where I'd be playing. That's where I'd be walking my dog. And it's not a common park, it's our subdivision open space. So I would like to see a reduction in lots, maybe so they could have an amenity package with a playground or that type of thing. I probably will be the only person that talks to you against the proposed sidewalk. The sidewalk on Downs would be convenient and safe for people who jog or walk. Your bike riders are not gonna be on the sidewalk, I think it's against the law for them to even be on the sidewalk. It's a sidewalk that goes nowhere. It doesn't go to West Main, it doesn't go to New Hope Academy so kids could walk to school, it doesn't go to the soccer field so kids could play soccer. I think there is a creative alternative with that sidewalk. I'm not a developer, I'm not an architect. There's an existing tunnel under Downs that the Tidewater animals went back and forth through. I would like to see that enhanced or rebuilt. It would connect the people from Willow Springs and Barclay to that side of Downs, where a sidewalk through some kind of joint venture between the developer and the city could go at least to the soccer complex, and I think that would help a lot with your traffic and your safety concerns. But again, of all the plans that we've had for this property, this is the best so far.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, I'm Harry Harris with the Boyd Mill Homeowners Association, and we will agree with Lauren Lexa's comments, and if those items can be addressed successfully, then we don't have any issues with the, with the development. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, is there someone representing the applicant? I'm sorry, you wanna speak as well? We'll have you speak first, and then, sorry.
Thank you so much, just, just for a minute. I always, whenever there's a concern or problem, and on this particular proposal, as a resident at two-twenty-five Lilac Circle, and my name is Sherry Moran, I do have a number of them, but I don't like to bring up a concern without offering some sort of reasonable solution that could be considered. And since the proposal on this particular property is kind of sandwiched between a much older neighborhood in Boyd Mill Estates and a very new neighborhood on Barclay Place that's there on Downs Boulevard, that I believe is probably about a third of the way through its development process, it seems to me that it would be very reasonable to consider a density for any proposed single-family residential development on this particular property not to exceed the existing approved density of either Boyd Mill or Barclay. That would allow a nice housing development and yet provide some real consideration about the problems that have existed for years for people that live within that corridor. And I would like also to mention, as happens whenever a new concept is rolled out to the, at a public meeting to introduce it, there's often a similar experience to the one that I had the night that I went to the New Hope Academy to see this one proposed, and that is that probably a third of the questions asked by neighbors from surrounding, the surrounding area were replied in one of two ways. One is, we're either working that through, or it is yet to be determined. And that leaves a lot of unanswered questions for residents in the area. And I know that you all get so weary of hearing the same and similar concerns for so many residential developments, and I think residents kinda get weary of coming and talking to you about them, but they're real, and really, it seems important that there be real discernment on each and every project, and that each one be considered on its individual merit and what enhancement it might bring to the part of town where it would be introduced. So I thank you so much for your consideration.
Can you speak back in your lane?
Sherry Moran, I did mention that, and I do live at two-twenty-five Lilac Circle. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, commissioners, my name is Jason Goddard with Design Studio. I'm here representing the developer and my client this evening, Wes Patterson of Patterson Companies. As Donald presented earlier, the property that's in subject this evening is twenty-three-point-one acres, located on Downs Boulevard, south of New Hope Academy. The property's currently zoned RX, there's no rezoning requested with this application. With the current, with the current zoning of RX, there is a previously proved concept plan, as we discussed, that dates back to August of 2008. I did bring a copy of that concept plan with us here, because I think it's pretty poignant to talk about some of the differences in the two plans. The existing concept plan consisted of fifty-two single-family lots on fourteen-point-two-five acres, which is associated around the internal core, which was a ninety thousand square-foot institutional use on eight-point-eight-five acres. The single-family lots on the fourteen-point-two-five made up a residential net density of three-point-six-five units per acre, and the ninety thousand square feet of institutional use had a floor-area ratio of point-two-three. The programming for the institutional use at the time was a six-hundred parishioner church, as well as a two-hundred-and-twenty-five student private school. As Donald mentioned, the, the church chose not to build on this location, so we're here this evening looking for a redevelopment plan. The proposed plan we have in front of you this evening converts that institution- The proposed plan we have in front of you this evening converts that institutional use to a residential component. The plan consists of 87 single-family lots on 23.1 acres. It is 3.77 DUA, up slightly from the 3.65 net density for the residential portion of the previous plan. The plan is designed on a modified grid system. The entry locations on the proposed plan are nearly exact, are pretty, pretty similar to the 2008 plan. We are proposing a turn lane, a left turn lane at the primary entrance on Downs Boulevard, although the traffic warrant study we prepared does not justify the turn lane. We feel that it's something that would be needed for the, for the community as well. The product is a combination of alley and street-loaded lots. There are 23 alley lots with a minimum dimension of 45 by 110, and there are 64 street-loaded lots with a minimum dimension of 52 by 130 feet. The non-alley homes will have a detached garage, and the garage will be recessed behind the home to keep a, keep good, clean, walkable streetscape. There are three formal open spaces designated on the plan, the central park here in the middle, a pocket park, courtyard, motor court up on the corner, and the detention facility and water quality facility is being designed in such a way, we're working with staff to make a formal component to that and then steps down into the detention area so that the water quality facility could also be utilized for the enjoyment of residents in that area and utilize that space. We have incorporated a eight-foot asphalt meandering greenway trail along Downs Boulevard. This property is subject to the recent City of Franklin Greenway and its open space master plan that was put together a couple of years ago, and therefore they did call out a greenway plan with that. We've worked with, we've worked with staff on that greenway plan. We've heard from some other planning commissioners and planning commissioners and aldermen about the significance of that trail and that eight-foot trail shown along the edge here. Some notable changes from the previously approved plan from 2008 to tonight. Obviously, the first one's pretty obvious, the elimination of the church and school. We have revised the traffic studies as part of our application. Notable figures in the traffic study that 68% of the AM peak hour traffic has been reduced with this plan, and 49% of the, of the peak PM hour traffic has been reduced with this change, basically by eliminating this church and school. Obviously, this eliminates all of the Sunday church traffic as well, church traffic coming to this site. We believe our residents will go to church. There's also been a significant reduction in alley and impervious surface. The previous plan, all, all 52 homes were serviced by a rear alley. We eliminated with this plan about 1,320 feet of alley. As Ms. Lexa pointed out, the alley that adjoined Boyd Mill Estates has been eliminated. It's pretty significant an alley because it's given us the ability to have a little more soft edge on, on that particular joiner and further ability to save some vegetation in that area. The lot sizes, I pointed out earlier, with the alley and street-loaded lots, is actually a 40% increase in lot size over the approved plan from 2008. We've received and reviewed the staff report. We're in agreement with all staff conditions and considerations and respectfully request your approval.
Thank you. All right, is there a motion?
Second.
Move to second, discussion?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
You're neck and, my neck of the woods now. One of the things that the residents said I thoroughly agree with, I, there is a traffic, there's a traffic problem everywhere. I guess that goes without saying in the City of Franklin now, but where you're proposing these 87 new units, you know, the description now is gently rolling agricultural land located along the curve on Downs Boulevard. And, and that is truly has, was, has been the character forever, and then, of course, came all the developments. I would ask, and just, was a lower density ever considered? I'm, I'm just wondering, it just looks like the entire, this entire lot is just covered with asphalt and houses. Was there any, was there any consideration? Number one, part of it is the traffic, okay? Because where you come out, where Downs Boulevard and Willow Springs, where it comes out now, that is a wait any time of the day. On Saturday, like they said, there are four police cars, county one Saturday, Franklin the next. Now, I live in Roland Meadows, so we come, normally we'll come around the back, and if you go to that intersection, you're just, you're going to be stuck unless the officer gets out of his car. Then if you go farther down to Boyd Mill and turn and go to that light, depending on if someone, it depends on what someone's doing at that light, it can just be during peak hours, it's a mess. And I see that you have staggered your interest in, you know, your, your two exits, which I do appreciate that. But I guess my question is, I would like to see less density. Part of the reason I voted no against the RX on the others because then you get this, there is no two or whatever, it's just whatever. I know it has to be developed, and I can't see the, the wild turkey, like she said before and all of that, but I'm just concerned that it's so many, okay? My subdivision, the first one in that area, when part of it was still the county, has a lot, okay? But I think every subdivision since then has been an improvement. And so that's my concern with this. I'm not quite sure if I want to vote against it or for it, but it just, the whole traffic thing would just keep packing and packing and packing. And I was wondering if you'd ever consider, had you tried to make it work with, with less? And I'm not even talking financially, I'm just talking about with your site.
Well, I, I'll speak to it from the only way I know how, and as a planner.
Yes.
I tell, I tell folks this at most of my meetings, most like, most folks I interact with, I meet with my developer, I meet with the builders, and determine what the product sizes are that they need and what the lot sizes are that are needed to accommodate those homes. And I prepare a plan, and I prepare the plan trying to create meaningful, meaningful open spaces, create a sense of community, the creation of the central park here in the middle, figuring out ways. And with planning, everything's a compromise. So, you know, how do you address, you know, this is a truck route, we understand that. How do you address that? How do you buffer that? How do you handle that? Taking all of those factors in consideration with the product that my client gives me, I prepare a plan. I'm not, I'm very rarely given criteria that you must have 100 lots on this property. I prepare the plan as aesthetically pleasing and as artistic as I possibly can, and the units sort of wash out as the units wash out.
Okay.
Jason, we heard on the previous application, issues with Clovercroft Road, blind spots, curb issues. Can you address concern with the curb and how this site links into that curb relative to, you know, right turn, left turn, those kind of issues?
Correct. As you can see on the property, we're in the curve. There's no, no place, there's no frontage along our property that is not in the curve. You know, with the previous plan from 2008, there was a traffic study produced, and then there was an amendment to the traffic study with updated, updated counts and an updated projections from this community. The warrant study that was prepared for us does not warrant a turn lane into the community to either of the entrances. There was a question regarding why there's two entrances. That's working with life safety, making sure there's a secondary access point to these communities. Andy King always wants to have two access points into the community, so that's why there's two. Even though the warrant, the traffic state didn't warrant a, a turn lane, the developers felt that it was good for the community to have a left turn lane into, into the community, as well as a dedicated right and left, right and left turn lane exiting the community at that primary entrance as well. With that, when we get into site plan, we'll also work with engineering on making sure that the, the view corridors from both of these angles, when it comes to signage and landscaping and things of that nature, are, are considered when that entrance is designed.
If I might, final comment. Mr. Goddard, and you can pass this on, and I hope the developer here just takes care. That is the one reason that I will vote for this, because you have provided for that, because it would be a safety issue, and although you didn't have to, for this site to be safe, you definitely need both of those, and I do. That is the one reason I will vote for, because you guys did go that extra amount to have the turn-in lanes, because they are really needed. Thank you.
And I would add to that real quickly, that the view lanes, the site triangles here, the site, you know, all sides, I think that needs to really be considered as you guys look at those site plans, which I know you will.
Mr. Chairman, just a question, what's the price point of these homes?
I'm not going to take my question.
The price point of homes are going to start in the 300s.
All right, any other comments?
Thank you for making that comparison to the old plan and the new. With the old plan, with, with the new plan, it will allow for some different price points in this development, so that's going to be a plus. And the same thing for the previous rezoning that was sent on to BOMA. It will allow, under the new housing ordinance, for some different price points, so that's a plus for the city.
Affordable housing units, I saw that.
And affordable housing arena.
So how many units are we talking about here?
How many total units?
No, how many units would have to be the affordable housing because you're getting a higher density?
Yes, we're working with staff on determining that number and determining what the fees